Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Wednesday, July 5th, 2023. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
Here.
Councilmember Novak.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Thank you. Why don't we adopt this evening's agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Um, Councilmember Novak.
Move to adopt the agenda. Second.
Motion by Novak and a second by Carlson to adopt the agenda. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. Um, the minutes, we need to approve the minutes from the June 20th, 2023 meeting.
Mr. Mayor, motion to adopt the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Armstrong to adopt the minutes. Any discussion or corrections? My only comment is in the other business. Um, I said there are $70,000 worth of fireworks for the show. The actual number came in, it was 57,000, but it looked like a $70,000 show. Yeah, okay. All right. Uh, motion and a second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And those minutes are adopted.
One extension.
All right, and one extension, Councilmember Ray Rower. Okay, we have two items on our consent agenda. The first one is to approve an agreement with Anoka Ramsey Community College for the security contract. The Coon Rapids Police Department provides evening security patrols and student escort services to Anoka Ramsey Community College through the part-time employment of police reserve officers. This is accomplished utilizing an agreement between the city and the state of Minnesota. And the contract between the city and the state of Minnesota is reviewed and renewed each year roughly following the state's fiscal calendar in a typical school year. The current contract expires on June 30th, 2023, and the new contract reflects a total contract amount not to exceed $37,000 and would be effective from July 1st, 2023 to August 31st, 2024. So we're looking to authorize the mayor and the city manager to enter into an agreement with the state of Minnesota and Anoka Ramsey Community College to provide security services for 2023 and 2024. And the next and final item on our consent agenda is to approve the final payment to McPhillips Brothers Roofing for Project 22-14 East and West Water Treatment Plant Roof Replacements. Uh, the final payment to McPhillips Brothers Roofing for Project 22-14 East and West Water Treatment Plant Roof Replacements. All right, we're looking to approve the change order and final payment to McPhillips Brothers Roofing in the amount of $37,865.65 for Project 22-14 East and West Water Treatment Plant Roof Replacements. What am I missing with that one W there? It's WWTP, and I would thought that was West Water Treatment Plant, but this is saying East and West, West Water Treatment Plant. And that's what it is, right? East and West roofs.
We did both roofs.
On the West Water Treatment Plant.
We replaced the West Water Treatment Plant roof and the East Water Treatment Plant roof, both treatment plants.
Okay, so it wouldn't be the East and West WWTP then? It would be the East and West WTP?
It would be the EWTB and the WWTP.
Thank you. I just thought there's something seems not right with that acronym there, okay. All right. Um, yeah, and there's our consent agenda.
I apologize.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Novak. Discussion or questions? I just had one. Um, our, our contract with the Anoka Ramsey for security, it's 37,000 this year. I'm assuming that's slightly increased from last year. Do we get a little 4% bump or something? Do we know?
It's actually not an increase for the first time in several years. We took a look at the number and we are actually got ahead a little bit. So, um, when we spoke with the people at Anoka Ramsey, we decided not to increase it this year. It happened about, I want to say six or seven years ago too, where for whatever reason we crept out a little bit ahead of what we were spending. And part of that is we have a, we have a pretty new reserve staff. We were down a few years ago, down to about five reserves, and we're up to 20, and they do get paid on a, a scale based on how long they've been here, so we were a little ahead.
Okay, that makes sense. All right, thank you. Uh, was, anybody else have any questions or discussion on this?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Novak.
Just a comment that acronyms have been biting me all day today, so I feel your pain.
No problem. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. Um, item number four is under new business. This is an introduction only, and it's to consider introduction of an ordinance for home occupation, city code sections 11-304 and 11-1210. Dakota, you are here tonight.
I am here.
All right, you want to give us the highlights of this one?
Sure. Yeah, so the commission's asked tonight to introduce an ordinance that would remove section 11, 304.2 currently titled Home Occupation Permits, and then add a new section 11, 1210 Home Occupations. So really the kind of highlight here is that the proposed amendment would remove the requirement for a home occupation permit, and then would outline the regulations that home occupations would continue to comply with, um, kind of moving forward. So, uh, planning staff, we identified a couple of short and long-term changes to our current zoning code, just to help clean up some inconsistencies and align better with current trends. And so for this year, we were kind of focusing on home occupations, um, wall sign allowances, which we'll also discuss on the next item, some PUD and administrative regulations, and then a few housekeeping items related to our residential districts. And so this was kind of presented as a work plan by staff to the planning commission at their January 19th, uh, meeting. And so tonight, here's the home occupation as part of that. And really the, the goals with this are to align our home occupation regulations with current trends as it relates to remote work, and then also align, um, kind of our, um, criteria with our peer cities. Um, Coon Rapids is kind of one of the few cities left that require a permit or going through that public hearing process for a home occupation. And then finally to kind of make it more clear, um, for our property maintenance staff to, to enforce these standards. I think there's been, um, our code can be interpreted as it currently is that, uh, the standards that are in the code only apply to those that have a permit or get a permit, and, um, property maintenance staff have had issues, I think, enforcing some things in the past. So this kind of takes it out of the administrative section of our code and puts it into our general district standards that apply to all zoning districts, um, and just helps it make it more clear, um, for property maintenance to enforce the, the zoning code as it relates to home We did, uh, provide these changes, um, and kind of shared them with the city council at an April 11th work session, and then also with the planning commission at an April 20th work session. There was some feedback kind of related to delivery vehicles, um, from the planning commission that we addressed, and I believe when we talked with the council, there's maybe just some input about kind of trailers and parking. And so we tried to, um, make that clear that things related to the home occupation should be parked in the driveway on a hard surface. If they end up parking on the street, we have parking regulations and other things in our code we can use to, to enforce that. And so it felt like the, the feedback was generally positive or supportive of these changes, so staff, we kind of decided to move forward here with what you see tonight. Um, so again, it's removing that home occupation permit section, adding a new home occupation section. Um, there's a couple of, um, changes to the hours of operation in some of the permitted home occupations, and then some of the standards, um, kind of working with our property maintenance staff that were either just kind of impractical or difficult to enforce, um, as it related to the size of the home occupation in a garage and, and those sorts of things, or that it could only occupy so many square feet in the house, or just really not kind of, they're really impractical for staff to really enforce. And so it's just kind of removing those, those items there. Um, and then planning commission did recommend, um, approval of the, the ordinance, and there was a public hearing at that meeting, and no one spoke at the public hearing. So happy to address any questions you might have.
Um, all right, does anybody have any questions of Dakota on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Yeah, I, I know in the, the, uh, outline here you'd mention, uh, as an example, auto repair can't be done. Uh, what are some others that kind of fit that criteria?
Yeah, yeah, auto repair is the big one, and that was kind of the, um, ones if property maintenance do get complaints, it's usually related to people repairing vehicles or, or trying to operate like a, I think we even had one case of someone trying to, uh, operate a, an automobile like rental service out of their garage. And so, uh, tho- those things aren't allowed, and they wouldn't be allowed with these changes. Um, and then some of the, um, other prohibited items, um, are kind of repair of internal combustion engines with more than 25 horsepower, body shops, welding, um, ammunition manufacturing, and then again, that motor vehicle repair, maintenance, service, or sale, um, aren't allowed.
Thank you.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Novak.
Dakota, I know at one point in time we discussed the federal firearms license out of the home. This is the ordinance that would address that, correct?
Yeah, that, that's correct. So that, um, item was removed, I think, in addition to tat two parters. It just felt like those were things that were already kind of licensed through other agencies and are kind of more regulated, and we as staff just kind of felt like the zoning code isn't really the appropriate enforcement mechanism if there was a concern, especially with the, the federal firearms license. Uh, it already has its own kind of standards and.
Default back to the ETF.
Yeah. Where it just, it just seemed like it was a little odd to have the zoning code be the thing enforcing some of that, and so those were removed here.
Thank you.
From that, yep.
I was, I was surprised that, and I, and we must have talked about this in April, and I forgot, um, that we're eliminating the line, "The home occupation can occupy no more than 400 square feet or 25% of the above-grade finished floor area of the principal structure, whichever is smaller." And we're going to, "The home occupation is clearly accessory use to the residential use of the property and does not change the character thereof." That just seems more subjective. You know, the first one seems like an objective thing, and this one seems kind of subjective, because I know several years ago we ran into that with the, the Snake House, for lack of another word, where that was, one of the problems was so much of the home was committed to that, to that business. And I, and I thought that was an objective, an objective standard that was kind of used at that time. Mr. Brody?
Um, you know, in the end on that one, what, what got the snake guy, um, was that he was having illegal snakes regardless of.
Well, and the air quality, yeah.
And the, and the things like that. So I think, um, you know, planning felt that it is a difficult, you know, what is 25%? You know, sometimes we don't have access to that. I think it's okay to have this more gentle, I think it gives us a little more flexibility, because there may be something that takes up very little space, but really does affect the, you know, is it really secondary, even if it is in 10% of the space, so it might fit our code or our current code, but really isn't, uh, secondary use to it, no. I guess don't press behind trying to give an example of that. Um, but I'm guessing it would be rare, but I think this gives a little bit more flexibility, but I think it still provides some objective. It's, you know, it's still got to be an accessory use, it can't be the primary use of the property.
Okay.
Um, and so I'm, I'm comfortable with that piece from a legal perspective, that we still have some ability to enforce that. And like I said, overall, I think the city staff is in support of this, so hopefully we'll make it easier. We're still going to have issues with auto repair, you know, and we're not, we're not changing anything with that, and that's usually their biggest complaint, unfortunately, but, uh, at least for some of the other businesses that we have, it'll make it easier for them to operate, um, and give us some standards if they're not operating correctly.
Okay, very good. All right, uh, this is just an introduction, but does anybody else have any more questions on this or any discussion? Whoopsie. Oh, come on, come back on. All right, and we are on item four, let's make sure that's where I'm at. All right. Then in planning case 23-12, we will consider the ordinance removing home occupation permits under application and amending, amending the city code section 11-304 introduced. And in planning case 23-12, um, an ordinance adding home occupations under general district standards and adding city code section 11-1210, we'll consider that introduced. And if anybody has any, uh, feelings about this or would like to let us know your thoughts, make sure you contact staff, um, or your council member or your mayor, uh, before our July 18th meeting, which is when we plan to take action on this. Um, okay. And the next item five, which is, I would say, related, and it's also an introduction only, this is, uh, consider introduction of an ordinance for temporary signs and wall signs, city code sections 11-1203.6 and 11-1203.7. Dakota.
All right, so here I think the kind of two goals we have with this, um, ordinance for, um, temporary signs and wall signs is to hopefully eliminate the need for future variances on some of our wall signs as it relates more to kind of big box retailers. Um, and then we've, we've had some inquiries from, um, like Torque Fitness and a couple other places where they've been wanting to do some more interesting signage, and I think the way that, with that 200 square feet has been a little bit more restrictive for some individuals, so hopefully kind of aligning more with micro, market trends and maybe eliminating the need for some future variances, and then also to clean up some content-based references in our, our temporary signs and to ensure that's more content neutral. Um, so for the, the temporary signs, it's kind of related to what we called a, a real estate sign or a temporary construction sign, so if you see a, um, a building or a vacant lot that's for lease or for sale, they're allowed to have kind of a sign, you know, to help, um, market that, that lot or that building. Um, and then again, if a project is under, um, kind of active construction, they're allowed to kind of have a construction sign. Usually you see kind of the, the financier or the, um, um, name of the construction company or something there. So it's kind of taking that away and just saying that if it's a, a lot or building for sale or for lease, or it's a property under active construction, that they're allowed a, a temporary sign constructed of durable materials. So it's just kind of, um, getting rid of that reference to a real estate sign or a construction sign. Um, and then in the, the wall sign, it's really just kind of updating, um, that kind of 200 square feet maximum area to 300 square feet maximum area. Uh, but we also have the, the 10% wall coverage that wouldn't change, and so quite honestly, that's probably the more restrictive of the two, or even though we're going to allow potentially up to 300 square feet, in most cases, that 10% of the wall is going to be smaller than 300 square feet. So this is really trying to address more kind of the larger big box stores where 200 square feet is pretty small and under that 10% of the wall. Um, and then also in our industrial districts, um, kind of like Torque Fitness and some others have indicated some interest. You see, you know, it's a lot larger wall, um, and to allow up to 300 square feet is probably still going to be under, um, 10% of that wall. So staff felt like increasing that, um, wouldn't all of a sudden cause a bunch of really large signs that felt out of scale, um, in the zoning district or of the building, um, there. So, yeah, again, I guess those are kind of the main, main highlights, so if you have any additional questions or comments, I'm happy to, to address those.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on this? No? All right, well nicely done. Nicely done, Mr. Crowell. Um, then in planning case 23-13, uh, the ordinance revising temporary signs and wall signs and amending city code sections 11-1203.6 and 11-1203.7, we will consider introduced, and we will, uh, be addressing those on July 18th. Item six, consider preliminary and final plat for the Lawrence Estates Second Edition, Joanna Douglas Lawrence. And Mr. Crowell.
All right, so my final item for you tonight, uh, you're asked to, um, the applicant's requesting a preliminary and final plat approval to create four new single-family residential lots and then one outlot. So the parcel that we're talking about here, um, is kind of between Coon Creek Boulevard and Verdun Street. Um, it's currently zoned low-density residential two. Um, and again, they'll be plating four lots for new single-family homes, um, along Verdun Street, and then kind of creating one, um, outlot. So the property owners own both this parcel and then the, the land to the south that's currently used for sod production. Um, and so there's no proposed change of the use of that land at this time, but if there were kind of future redevelopment there, um, the idea is the, the outlot with this plat, um, could be combined, um, with that kind of redevelopment, um, in kind of in coordination with, with the lot to the south. So this was just kind of a map to give you an idea of where, where we're talking about, so if you see kind of, um, lows in that commercial area in Riverdale Village here, um, kind of just a little bit north-east of there on Verdun and Coon Creek Boulevard. And so this is the, the plat itself. Um, the total size of the parcel is about 3.74 acres, um, lots one, two, and three would each be 80 feet wide and 135 feet long, for a total of 10,800 square feet each, which is the minimum, um, lot standard that we have for the low-density residential two district. Um, and that leaves about, um, a buildable area of about 3,900 square feet, um, for a house to be built in, in meeting our, our setbacks. Um, and then that fourth lot is just slightly larger, it's 90 feet wide and 135 feet long, um, for about a 4,500 square foot buildable area on the lot. And then that outlot A, uh, would remain in ownership with the applicant, um, and it's about just under two and a half acres. And so again, continued to be owned by the applicant, and then in the future, um, if, with any potential redevelopment of the, the lot to the south, it could be done in coordination with this site. They have all the appropriate drainage and utility easements. Um, there was some reference in the Anoka County comments as it related to right-of-way on Coon Creek Boulevard, um, and that was addressed between the applicant and the county. Um, and they're not going to, um, they're no longer requiring additional right-of-way, and that's something they can address in the future, kind of, um, with potential redevelopment of that outlot. The subdivision of land does result in additional development that would cause additional demand upon our recreational and park facilities, so there would be a park dedication fee of $2,000 per residential lot, um, required with this plat. So kind of with that, if you have any questions, I'm here and the applicant's also here, um, and this is just kind of a number of conditions that we, we noted, um, with the plat.
All right. Anybody have any questions or concerns? Very quiet. I think I, I have to actually admit that I was wrong last time when we approved the development just to the north. I thought there should be a cul-de-sac that came in from, to develop that whole parcel, but now I see there's actually enough room to come in from the south with the street and actually have another, sorry, um, have additional lots there. Mm-hmm. All right, nice. Okay, well, we have no questions. Councilmember Geisler.
In planning, I'd like to make a motion in planning case 23-14 to approve the preliminary plat and adopt resolution 23-75, granting final plat, plat approval with the following conditions. Um, one, all engineering comments be addressed. Two, the applicant worked with Anoka County to ensure adequate right-of-way is provided with the final plat. Three, the park dedication fee of $8,000 be paid prior to releasing the plat for recording, which is $2,000 each of, for the four lots. The applicant verified proof of ownership of outlot A, Lawrence Estates Second Edition, prior to releasing the plat for recording. At least one street tree is required to be planted on each lot at the time of issuing a building permit. And six, any deferred and or postponed assessments attached to the lot be paid at the time of development.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, it was a race, I'm going to give it to Carlson for the second. Any further, does any, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
I'd just like to say I think it's great that we're going to see a few more, uh, new homes in Ward One. Uh, the other homes that are being built there are looking really well and looking really good, so I'm excited to see that. It's a great spot for them. Um, just a comment, uh, take it easy on brand-new, uh, you know, newly reconstructed Verdun Street, just being done right now, but I think it's great that we're going to have this, have this.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
Yeah, I'd like to just concur, I'm just real happy with that use of the property. I'm real happy we're, it looks great to me.
All right, motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Squeaked by. All right. Thank you, thank you. Item seven is to consider a contract for the Coon Creek Regional Trail Pedestrian Bridge Design Services Project 24-6. Mr. Himmer.
Mr. Mayor, council, uh, continuing our conversation in the work session earlier this evening, the city has received both state and federal funds to construct a pedestrian overpass over Coon Rapids Boulevard near Zilla Street, uh, Central Homes, the Port River Walk area. Uh, we requested three proposals or got proposals from three different consulting firms to advance construction, well, not construction service, design service. We got to get environmental documents and design complete first. Uh, we did have three proposals received, staff is considering two based upon some of the feedback tonight from the council. Um, we'd like to move forward with the recommendation to award to Kimley Horn in the amount of We do have a master consulting agreement with them, so we would just execute a letter of engagement to that. Uh, the mayor, myself, and Matt would sign, and we'd like to get started on this sooner rather than later to maybe get this into construction as early as next year. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Himmer? All right.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
I make a motion to approve a design services proposal and authorize the execution of a letter of engagement with the chosen engineering firm for the Coon Creek Regional Trail Pedestrian Bridge Project 24-6.
Second.
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Novak. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rare.
Councilmember Griscoviac, and first?
Do we need to name the named contractor? Engineering firm, that is?
Um, so. Ms. Rare. I, I think we.
So we approved a design services proposal and authorized the execution of a letter of engagement with Kimley Horn for this Coon Creek Regional Trail Pedestrian Bridge Proposal 24-6. Was that your motion?
Yes. That is my motion.
All right, and that was the second?
Absolutely.
All right. We good with that, Mr. Brody?
I am now.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And that motion carries. Is there anybody here for open mic this evening? No? All right. Close the open mic portion of the meeting, and we have one, uh, open mic response from our last meeting, and that was, uh, for an Amy Lazlo, uh, 120 XXX Ilex Street. Uh, she expressed concerns with the city's removal of geese, um, and as outlined in the city's DNR, approved goose management plan, park and recreation spaces typically experienced excessive goose, um, excrement in many areas, including parking lots and picnic areas, along trails, on the athletic fields, and around, uh, the concession and bathroom areas. Uh, they also often feed on and cause damage to the fairways and greens at Munker Hills, and also cause similar concerns on the athletic fields, baseball, football, soccer, et cetera, typically at the most critical time of establishment and high usage during the athletic seasons. These excrement deposits are a nuisance and elicit numerous complaints from park users. Um, we also have to monitor the water. That, I don't see that in here, but I know the water quality goes down from it too. Um, while staff, and I would say council, is sensitive to the concerns around removal of geese, it is unfortunately necessary to maintain, there it is, water quality, mitigate goose damage to property, and prevent unsanitary conditions for members of the public using the city's parks and recreation spaces. The city's goose management plan, which provides additional information on this matter, can be found on the city website, it's very comprehensive. Um, in addition to speaking with council, uh, she's made several requests for data, and those requests are being answered separately by the city clerk's office. So that's just the, uh, open mic response, and we are on to other business for council. Is there any other business to come before council this evening?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
I just want to say that I was so sad to miss the festivities this weekend, but I heard. I just wanna say that I was so sad to miss the festivities this weekend, but I heard they were absolutely fabulous for our Fourth of July celebration. I did end up, um, with COVID, so I had to miss the parade, but I'm, it's been 10 days and I tested negative yesterday, so I'm safe to be here today. Um, but just wanted to express for those of you at the parade, I wish I could've been there to, to wave at you and say hi, but I had a, a very good reason why I had to stay home.
We would've, we would've stayed six feet from you, Carl.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Carlson?
Carlson, yes, sir.
Well, no, no, I know, I know. I was just wondering if you're gonna go to the, to the, to the event right now? Cause if you were, I was just gonna ask you to wait just a second.
I'll wait a second, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Um, I just, I know that, I want, I wanna end on a high note. I wanna end on what a successful event it was. Um, but I know that we had some residents and some of our folks that were here that were kind of shaken a bit. We had about 300 people visit from across, from somewhere that were not residents from here. Um, we had hundreds of youth that did not appear to be from our area, kind of overrun our carnival midway, creating havoc. This caused fear, uncertainty, and general chaos for lots of folks, including families who were only there to celebrate with us. And this was specifically the night of the Fourth. And Captain Steiner, and I know you were there because you were, you, I saw you racing into it, um, and experienced it firsthand, and I also know that if it were not for the experience and professionalism of our law enforcement, the outcome could've been worse. I don't know if you're prepared to comment on the event, but I want you to know, I received a call from a neighboring city council member articulating grave concerns about the situation, um, because they have large events coming up as well, and he expressed interest in a more multi-jurisdictional approach to proactively looking for ways of mitigating this in the future. He thought maybe the joint law enforcement council or possibly organizing through the Anoka County Sheriff's Office, we just want you to know, and I'm sure I speak for the city council, whatever we can do to help as elected officials, we are here to support you and to do whatever it takes to minimize the risk of this happening again. So I, I know that was, it was a very scary situation there, unfortunately. Mr. Steiner, Captain Steiner?
Yeah, Mayor and council, it was an unfortunate ending to what was otherwise a very successful event. And, you know, I know people, um, other than the midway area, probably didn't even know there were problems in the midway, and, and that's a good thing. We did get some word, uh, about 7:00, 7:30, uh, from an agency in Hennepin County that they had, um, kicked out a large group, two or 300 people that were causing problems and that they heard they were on their way to Coon Rapids. They did descend upon the Coon Rapids Dam, started, uh, a fight down there and fireworks, and then they worked their way, and they found us about 7:30, 8 o'clock. Um, we, we actually owe a debt to our neighboring agencies who covered our calls. We had to bring everybody into the event. And, uh, unfortunately, eventually it got away from us with fights and overall disorderly behavior, drinking. And then what ultimately prompted us to end it was, uh, some detonation of commercial-grade fireworks in the crowd that was just a safety concern. We couldn't let go any further. So we did end it, and, uh, to your point, we are, um, 100% on board with, uh, looking at how we did things and how we can do things different next year, uh, to try to keep this a good, safe, family event, which is what it's intended to be. And, uh, we're looking forward to working with staff and the event planners in other cities if that's, that's a great idea, so, um, yeah, it shouldn't overshadow what was really a great event otherwise.
No, because like you said, the, the line of demarcation was the sidewalk. Nobody on the south side of the sidewalk knew anything was going on up there, other than the midway got shot down. Most didn't even notice that, so.
Right.
Awesome. Thank you, Captain Steiner, and thank you for all the great work you guys did.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Okay, the negative's been covered.
The negative's been covered, all right.
So first of all, Captain Steiner, I want to thank you for your leadership, uh, your being there to kind of guide things. My goodness, we all know, these things are very, very volatile, very dangerous. They can just go really south very quickly and put a lot of people in harm, uh, citizens, officers. And I want to thank you for your leadership, uh, last night. You were right in the thick of things. Um, I also want to thank all of our officers and our reserves and anyone who was in there in the thick of this, um, for their courage and, um, for their professionalism. And I also want to thank the Anoka Police Department, Blaine Police Department, Anoka County Sheriff's Office for keeping, keeping things as best as they could, coming into someone else's town to answer calls. I mean, what a, you know, what a fantastic thing this mutual aid is, and thank goodness that they were available to help us out while things were going south at the midway. I want to thank, uh, thank you, Captain, and thank the police department and the other agencies surrounding our city.
Excellent. Um, I'm just, I'm gonna read this real quick, um, cause I've kind of, you're trying to make sure you include as many of the people as you can. Um, we just wrapped up the Coon Rapids Fourth of July celebration. The celebration kicked off Sunday with a parade and lots of music and a fun, and fun parade units, and we were able to introduce our new Rocky character and mascot, led by Councilmember Carlson, I might add.
Just MC.
Didn't get him in the suit, but-
It'll come, it'll come, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, all right. Um, Sunday evening, we had the Second Annual Coon Rapids High School All Class Reunion. There were 360 registered attendees, but well over 500 in attendance. And if you are a Coon Rapids High School alum and you missed it, we will be doing it again next year. The plan is to host an all-class reunion the first day of the celebration every year. A big shout out and thank you to Ray McManus and the Short Stop Bar and Grill for sponsoring the band for the all-class reunion. We had a car show on Monday, a huge celebration on two, on Tuesday that kicked off with the Firecracker 5K, um, culminating in one of the preeminent fireworks displays in the state. This tremendous event can only happen because of the hard work of volunteers from the Coon Rapids North Star Alliance Club and the Coon Rapids Fire Department Social Club. It also requires all hands on deck and hard work and/or contributions from Anoka County Central Communications, Anoka County Sheriff's Office, Anoka Ramsey Community College, Alina Health, from the city of Coon Rapids. It would probably take less time to list the people that weren't involved, but it was police, fire, the ICE Center, Public Works, including parks and streets, communications and marketing, the city manager and the city clerk's offices, City, CTN Studios, and it seems like everyone is lending a hand somewhere. Uh, Community Strength Foundation, Bunker Hills Golf Course. A thank you to Alloy Brewing for bringing in some of your great beer and spending all three days serving and for helping with our Firecracker 5K. Thank you to all of the food trucks that took a chance on our event and brought in their great food and treats. A separate shout out to Diane Busta for organizing the parade and working tirelessly with the rest of her North Star Alliance Clubs for the entire, the entire event. Tiffany Thicke, who takes point on the Firecracker 5K and seemed to be working everywhere for the entire event. A big shout out to the carnival chair, Jason Harbison, and our amazing pyrotechnician that puts the great fireworks out every year, Jake Schultz. There are so many more that could be mentioned, just know we really appreciate all you do to make our largest event each and every year such a success. That's what I've got. Now, anybody else want to add anything else, you go for it. Councilmember Armstrong?
First, first off, and, and I'll, I'll make this part short, I promise. Thanks again for all of the work that you guys did. The, the Coon Rapids Police Department, I, it, it may sound weird or whatever, but I am, I'm so proud of you guys and the way you represent yourselves. Um, I, I saw more, I saw more interaction, positive interaction, um, before, before the, the end of the, the-
We're not talking about that anymore, remember? Oh, that's true. No negatives, only good things, Brian.
Take that, rewind. But you guys, you guys are fantastic. You really are, and, and enough said on that, but the, the all-class reunion, um, that was a fantastic event as well. I saw a lot of, uh, friends that I have not seen in years, in years and years. Um, I actually met a couple that was grad, had graduated a year after I was born, and I'm not young, so. But, uh, that being said, to, to Stephen, the, the, uh, the great group at CTN, I just wanted to let you know, I was in the parade. I was buried back in the, the, uh-
They mentioned you.
-Coon Rapids Marshing Cardinals. Yeah. They said, where's, where's Councilman Armstrong? I was there trying to keep all these kids happy with candy. Um, but, uh, uh, and, and, uh, last but not least, um, I, I heard more positive comments from people about this year's event, just the way it was run, just the way it was organized, and that a lot of people's suggestions from, uh, last year or the, the prior years had been taken into account. Um, and I think, oh, last but not least, um, you, you may not have seen it out there in TV land, but there is nobody here for open mic tonight. There was a ton of good suggestions that, uh, that I got just walking around and at the, the, uh, Coon Rapids reunion. Um, there's a lot of good ideas and that, that people have out there. Take advantage of open mic night and, and come and talk to us if you're not, if you're not communicating with your council person. I don't know if, if others feel the same way as far as open mic, but, uh, yeah, I'd love to hear your, your suggestions.
Yeah. The parade was interesting. I had the golf cart that I couldn't stop. So if I looked like a Shriner, it was because I couldn't, I couldn't take my foot off the gas or it would die and not restart, so, yeah. Thanks for staying out of my way in your other carts. All right. Any other business to come before council?
Mr. Mayor?
Next, Tuesday, July 11th, is our meeting in the park at the Boulevard Plaza and whatever is left of it after the parade moves out or after the carnival pulls out, right? 6:30?
Correct. Mayor, council, our last meeting of the year. We're hoping for good weather. It'll be a similar format, but we'll have the addition of the splash pad for kids or adults, I suppose, if they want to enjoy that part of it, too.
Yeah, we don't have an age limit on that.
No, we don't.
That's right. Yeah, I was gonna bring up all of the additional things other than, um, our fabulous event this last weekend. Um, so it is the Summer in the City Meeting on Tuesday, um, Farmer's Market every Wednesday, also at the ICE Arena, don't forget that. And next week, Thursday, is the Summer Concert, which is the High 48s. So that, and then of course, there's always our fabulous Rec on the Spot team. Um, and you can see them at the Summer in the City Meeting as well. So if you don't know what that is, and they show up at the parks and do fabulous things with the kids, so always check out the city website. There's always something to do.
Something new in the parade this year. We had Cornerstone Church, I think it was, that brought up the end. Usually it's a fire truck always ends, but that float was at the end and they all, they all had garbage bags. They picked up the whole parade route. They literally walked into people's yard, any trash? I mean, they were just, wow, it was awesome. It was a very cool thing. Okay. Any other business to come before council?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Motion by Ray Rower and a second by Novak to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.